Everyone rise. Let's go over and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Did you have a statement? Can you sit down and move on to the other?
I don't know if I need to speak or I'm just here for the final approval of the flag on that Rock Hill Ranch that we're trying to get going on my grandfather's place. And I've got the minors with me and I just wanted to make sure I was here if y'all had any questions.
You're on the agenda.
Okay. Is that, I didn't know if there's anything else. Okay.
I thought we'd have our... engineer here. It's not present.
Mr. Lynn Rice, yes sir. Okay.
I'm sure he's...
He's reviewed it and everything. I believe there's signatures on it, but anyway. I didn't know if that was something that we needed to get signed. Y'all's signatures on this tonight or if y'all signed, I think they said y'all signed it tomorrow or something and sent it to us. I want it to be, but I just wanted to be here and see if there's anything I needed to do. I'm new at this, so.
Okay. You're on the agenda.
Ray Cooper.
Good evening, council. I'm here to talk today about the municipal utility districts. There's been a few that have popped up recently in Godly. And I just want to make sure that the council fully understands what these are. I've sent an email out that came out late. I was at church camp when the agenda came out, so I don't know if you have time to look at it. But the reality of these municipal utility districts is I'm going to tell you a story of the one that we've approved in Godly. So right before voter registration closed, James McLeod Thoki, a Roanoke, Texas resident, registered to vote in the city of Godly. They put a mailbox in front of a gate at 8909 10 006. They put a travel trailer, never hooked it up to any municipal stuff, water, power, or anything like that. It didn't even have a battery hooked up to it. And it sat there until the second day of voting. James McLeod Thoki was the one registered voter for that mud. One registered voter voted on $900 million in bonds and the ability to add $1 ad valorem tax to the 1,600, 1,700 residents that will move in to what was formerly known as Carroll Farms, right behind Starlight Ranch. One individual from Roanoke, Texas parked a travel trailer, who was also the early voting clerk. And I don't know if it approved because the law firms in charge of the election and they won't answer emails. So I don't know if it's approved. I'm going to assume it did. It's called the Belmont Municipal Utility District. So when I, so this is something that was approved years ago. These things take years to come to fruition. But if you don't know what these municipal utility districts do, if that property is scheduled to get annexed by the city, I don't know if it is or if it ever is, and they have $900 million in debt, you'll pick up that debt. Your future residents, if you annex that, will have that dollar added tax to their tax bills. Mosaic's doing a comprehensive plan and your overall city match with all of your class haven't even been updated since 2007. That's this man's responsibility. Do you guys even know what has actually been approved over the last 10, 12 years in the city? So you can make these decisions. I hope you do. I hope you guys are fully aware of these. Maybe you are. We don't get to see board packets which would answer that question and we wouldn't come up here and ask these questions. So maybe you get that information or it's not shared with us. I don't know. And a lot of you guys weren't here. This has been going on since I want to say 2019. So one individual parked a trailer, was an election, was the only registered voter in an entity. Citizens in your community here on the Board of Directors. This creates a lifetime revenue stream for the people that run these. It allows them to basically pull close to a billion dollars in bonds to do this. It's legal to do. But I want to make sure that as, because this was approved through City Council of Godly. Not you guys, but former City Councils approved it. So I want to make sure as these are coming up, you guys have full awareness on the long-term implications of potential future residents and the people that live in your ETJ. So please look at this before you just blindly approve them. I don't know what your intent is. I hope, again, maybe in your board packet, you have all that information. But again, one individual, right before early voting, registered to vote in Godly. He's the early election clerk, parked a travel trailer in an empty field, and had the ability to make a decision on close to a billion dollars in bonds and a dollar additional tax. It's a lot of power from a man of half. And it all started in the City Council. So just please be aware of all of this stuff. If you want more information on it, I'll be more than happy to give it to you. I've sent you, Ms. Rice, a pamphlet that'll answer some basic questions. But please understand the long-term ramifications of some of this stuff that's coming. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Hey, the lady? She has just stepped outside.
Oh, cheers.
Cheers, you. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to talk tonight about Mosaic and the last Zoom meeting that I was part of regarding zoning and the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to remind the council that the council has control over zoning and you do not have to say yes to multifamily housing. That is controlled by the council via zoning. And via the survey that the students, or excuse me, that the residents filled out, they made it clear that they did not want multifamily because they wanted us to stay rural and multifamily development takes away from the rural feel that we have. So I feel like the council should listen to the citizens over Mosaic. After doing some digging on Mosaic's website, I did see that they had a very big diversity, equity, and inclusion. So I feel like the agenda there for the multifamily comes from that. And so, like I said, the council does control zoning through zoning changes and the council should listen to the citizens and what they want for the future of their city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rice.
That's all we have.
All right. Item 1A. Swearing in of new mayor and City Councilor. Pardon me.
Anyway, I do believe that there was a change in the last minute to the agenda, so that item is not applicable for tonight's meeting.
Okay. We have no proclamations, no consent agendas. It's a second meeting. No item under public hearing. Discussion and action items. 5A. Discussion and possible action on accepting the resignation of Mayor S. T. B. Are you still resigning? Well, I'm trying. If you tell me, I can't do that. Make a motion to accept the resignation of Mayor S. T. B.
I'll second that motion.
On the third?
Yeah.
No security. So that being under public hearing on you, Michael? You leave?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good.
Aye.
Well, it took a lot of courage to do what the mayor did. I think that he ought to be applauded.
Thank you.
I was thanking him for his service to the city over the many years. Not for resigning. Just clear that up. I wasn't trying to mean... This woman, she wants to make him resign.
So at this time, since we have a very good council meeting, we still have a forum of three. Just to make that clear. I'd also like to remind everyone, if you're going to comment, please make sure the microphone's on. We are live streaming. I'm like, there's people in the audience and online and they'll be there. This time, I would like to ask that a council's permission to move items I, D, E, F, S, N, K, P, Q, T, and I from the beginning of the agenda in that order.
Or can you please repeat that?
D, E, F, S, N, K, P, Q, T, and I.
Thank you.
This is rear pro temp. We have Lieutenant Sergeant T.O.S. here.
Yes, that's one of the agenda items for, I just gave a motion.
Make a motion, Lee. Move these agendas per what you said out before the order you gave.
Second. I got a motion in a second. Yes. unanimous. Item D. Discussion and possible action on confirming Police Officer John Longin. Officer H. O.
Hello, council. This is John Longin. This is his wife, Rebecca Rager. Longin comes to us from Navarro Police Academy, where he graduated battlefield glory of his class while also held a full-time job as well. He did four years in the Army and he's currently still in the reserves in the Army. Pretty exciting to have here. And I think he'll serve very good committee. I'd like to be on the permit as a police officer.
How many, how many police officers do we have? I mean, are we budgeted for at this time?
So we're budgeted for eight patrol officers, police supervisor, and one chief, and one SRO. If y'all prefer them, we're still down one patrol officer.
But right now, you have two officers on it all round?
I'm like, not. I have two officers on one day shift, one officer on one day shift.
All my questions.
I made the motion to confirm Police Officer John Longin at this time.
Second.
I got a motion in ten seconds.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item E. Discussion and possible action on the confirmation, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, court clerk position. Ms. Rice, we can introduce the court clerk.
Yes, sir. This is Mariana, her name. She is our municipal court clerk at this time. She's doing an excellent job and has completed training and still learns new things every day. I recommend an improvement.
I understand that there was some controversy around this hire from prior legislative officials. I don't think we should hold that against her. Each day that I've come up here over the past two weeks, she has been very bright, smiling, very helpful. Anytime I needed something in here, she would do it. She'd always come check and make sure I didn't need anything else.
When I come in here, I was watching Mr. Hernandez work and I asked her, I said, "Would you like the job?" She said, "I love it." And I was waiting on Catherine for something and I saw Mr. Hernandez gets up out of her chair, goes down the hall. A little bit later, she runs back. And so I think the energy that you offer and the love of the job, etc., is going to make you one of the finest, if not the finest municipal court clerk this state has ever had and our citizens have ever had. I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Mr. Hernandez as municipal court clerk.
Officer, I got a motion in a second. Any discussions? No further discussion? Take a little time. I, thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Item F. Discussion and action on confirming Brian Thompson as the City of Godly Part IV Fire Chief.
Chief?
I guess you can introduce yourself since you had launched it.
Brian Thompson, Fire Chief, took over for Chief Bullard when he vacated his position. And we're here for confirmation. Brian Thompson, Fire Chief, took over for Chief Bullard when he left and I'm here tonight for confirmation, I guess.
Make motion to confirm Brian Thompson as the City of Godly Part IV Fire Chief. Second.
I got a motion in a second to confirm.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Item S. Discussion and consideration and possible action of proving the steering committee for the Godly comprehensive plan is recommended by the state.
Do that for me, everybody. Can y'all hear me okay? I know we need to use this. How do you want me to say? Do we just say next? I just thought I said I don't have my look. So sorry about that. I'll try to be smooth. It's good to talk to you guys again. I thought it'd be good tonight to just do a quick update on where we're at in the process. And then also, you know, originally, we had talked about doing a steering committee from the beginning, but just with all the transition happening, decided to wait until after election. But we're at a point now where it's going to be a little difficult to keep moving. We've managed to get everything back on track schedule-wise, which I'm very proud of everybody for running through things quickly but getting a lot of input done. So we've done a ton of input. We're back on schedule. I'd like to keep us on schedule, but to do that, we need to kind of figure out the steering committee situation. So just a quick project update. We had some conversation about steering committee. You can skip that. So in March is when we had that town hall meeting at high school. Pretty good attendance at that. The project website was up from that point onward. And so we've been using that website as a platform to get people subscribed so they can give information whenever we post new stuff. And that has also been our way to link in to the online surveys. There were, I believe, seven surveys that ran online for about six weeks. And then for the community forum, which was this weekly series of meetings, I think we did six of those as well. So the website's going to stay active a whole life of the project, so you can still go there and get information. And every time we do a presentation or give information, it goes to the website. So anything related to this project has gone there. Next. And right now, so there's kind of four basic phases to the project. We finished the State and the City, which was a consultant analysis. And we're now coming up close to the unfinished division plan, which is where we gather community input and package that up into goals and a vision statement and some type of framework for the plan moving forward. So we finished the surveys. We finished the community forum. And so now we're kind of at a place where, again, consultants can take all that input back and package it up into a report. But it's going to be tough for us to do that in the absence of steering committees. So that's the main point of this. And then once we get that in place and get that vision plan report done, which should happen in July, then we'll be developing individual planning components like land use and thoroughfare and housing and things like that. And we're targeted to finish everything by the end of the calendar year. Next. Online surveys were actually great. We got a lot of, a lot of input from that. There were tons of questions that gave us feedback. Some of them were like, give one word to describe Godly. Others were about getting an idea of where everybody was from, city versus ETJ, and questions about transportation, housing, all kinds of stuff. Next slide. So these were the specific surveys that we did. Number questions and the number of participants. You can see, we kind of averaged around 30 people that took each survey, which for, for the size of Godly, from a percentage participation, it's been huge. Like if you look at it from that sense, I mean, even with cities of the size of Godly, you get 30,000 people, a meeting of like 100 people is great, like amazing. So the fact that every single one of these got about 30 hits is a good percentage of participation for the city. So we talked about the character, transportation, mobility. Public services included water, wastewater, but also other services that the city provides. Community and culture was a little more on the design side of things. And then how people feel about growth, that's an important one. And housing and the economy. Next. The forum, what we did was we set up a community forum, so it's a series of meetings. I believe a lot of you guys participated in at least one or two of those. And we did them every week for six weeks. We added one. We added a leading into this because we didn't have a steering committee and so we needed some of that information to keep moving. So we've actually done one extra. We did something that was supposed to be a steering committee thing as part of this process so we could kind of make sure that we're getting input meaningful before we finish that forum out. So we did actually six topics instead of five for that. Next. We talked housing in neighborhoods on May 3rd. We went over the survey results. We talked a little bit about density, about what everybody kind of wants and doesn't want. We talked also about housing options. We talked also about housing options for everybody on how, because the coverage rate is relatively high in Godly, construction needs to be given the fact that everybody who lives here needs a place that is, that they can afford. We did a transportation meeting next. One of the things that came up out of that one and stayed as a continuous theme throughout all of this was safe routes to school and making sure that sidewalks and bike trails and ways to connect students, especially elementary and intermediate, to their school safely is a big deal. Then we went over some of the other survey. We had one meeting dedicated solely to people who lived in the ETJ to figure out, they come a lot, they're very involved, and I've actually never been in a city where county residents have a say in city things. It's a very new thing. It's good that you, that that's been taken into account, but I was curious to see what was kind of causing that, like, because it's very unique. So we had a really good discussion about the impact of new development on drainage and on traffic and on quality of life on small town deals. And so that was the focus of that conversation. And in the next meeting, we talked about community identity. We talked a little bit about commercial development in this one, how once, as Godly grows, what tends to happen along highways in terms of commercial development and what, what should happen to keep the feel here the way that people wanted to stay. In the next meeting, we started getting into some activities. We looked at some of the priorities and recommendations that come up in previous meetings to kind of rank them. So are they expensive to do? Are they low cost, high cost? And then how much money for everybody to contribute? Or do they have a high impact or a low impact? So it was a participatory meeting where everybody kind of got to give their two cents on how they would kind of score out the different priorities that we discussed. And then the last meeting, we did a brief map exercise to talk about intersections, like priority intersections, which ones were needed, most needed improvements for, we talked about it, for pedestrians and for vehicles. And then also in terms of commercial development and residential development, where everybody can kind of see things playing out a little bit. So this is, this is just a community input exercise to see what people think. So we got that information and that will come into the planning process as well. We also through this project, okay, next slide. We talked briefly about different types of residential housing, that it's not just single-family, multifamily. There's lots of different kinds of housing products and you have to be really careful. If your zoning quote doesn't create bins for all of those, then everybody can build everything everywhere. So if you know what it is that you want your town to look like, you've got to be really careful to make sure that your zoning has plugged back and is accommodating and all of that. We talked about conservation subdivisions and how the way builders are building right now doesn't always match the way cities own. So the lot sizes that a lot of cities have set like thirty, forty years ago doesn't really match how builders build today. And so creating tools that increase flexibility for them but also preserve your open space and small town feel is a good direction to go into. We talked about auto-oriented, brush and pedestrian-oriented, commercial, and acquiring town, those different expressions might be more appropriate. And about value. We talked about capturing value along the highway and not just stripping out your highway with low-end, high-traffic uses that go down over time, tend to look a little junky after a couple of decades. Don't pull the value and don't contribute a lot from a sales tax perspective to the city. So that was another thing we talked about. I mentioned this at the beginning, June through August is kind of going to be consultant work period. We're going to take all that feedback we got in the last few months, craft the vision plan, and then once we do that, we're going to get the land use thoroughfares and all the other planning components. Our goal is to do the project open house to present everything in October. But like I said, so we've really pushed to get this back on schedule, and I think we are, but we, we need to get that steering committee appointment as soon as we can, so we can keep moving. Quickly, so typically, you know, the steering committee would fulfill these three main roles. They would participate in the meetings and workshops. They'd be a liaison between the consultants and the community to help to kind of communicate, this is what people are thinking, this is what they're not, and then explain to their neighbors, you know, what are y'all doing? And they'd give them updates so that you're not having to have me and your community saying things, but they would be the kind of spokespeople for the project. So they'd have to participate in order to do that. And also be able to communicate in a positive way so that we're, we need to be able to capture the vision in a positive way, accurately reflect what everybody wants, and move this into successful process of adoption so that you guys have a master plan. You cannot make decisions about infestation, about infrastructure development, about bonding, about anything in the absence of some type of master plan, or you're acting arbitrarily and that just, you don't have grounds for those types of decisions. So you really do need a master plan in place as Godly moves forward and continues to follow this creative development coming through. So can we go back one more time? Sorry. Is that three? Yeah. And lastly, finally, we're reviewing content, and that is the main thing that we need from the steering committee right now, because this vision plan, we need them to be able to review that and, and help us kind of mark it up. And I wouldn't like the way that sounds. That's not right, that kind of stuff. Our recommendation, because the steering committee would be coming in mid-process, if we were at the beginning of the project, I think you'll be more lecturing on picking who you think that needs to be, but because we're mid-process, it would be very difficult for people who have not been involved in this to step in and not lose context. So we would just recommend pulling from people who participated in that community forum as, as, as I think would be the most suitable group to use as your steering, because it's the same size. We average, I think our biggest forum meetings were ten to thirteen, and the smallest was five. So they usually ended up being about seven or nine people on each column, and that's a really good size. So next slide. There were nine people that participated in more than one meeting, so in multiple meetings. Five of those are either city residents or city business owners. Three are Johnson County residents and one is the school district representative. So those people, not just one time, but they were consistently involved in the process and they were actively involved. So they gave us a lot of comments, a lot of feedback. And, and I like that because it demonstrates their interest in the project. It demonstrates their willingness and ability to participate in regularly scheduled events, and it demonstrates their level of comfort in engaging and providing feedback. And so those are three attributes you need to use for it. We haven't asked anybody yet, so these are just, you guys can do with this whatever you want, but just be our recommendation. So as I said, seven or nine would be the ideal size. So like the blue box on the left is kind of in my mind how you would set it up. Then the list of people on the right is those nine people who have been participating. So you've got four city residents, one city business owner, three county residents, and then school district. So there you go.
So on the previous slide, are those the only people that participated or were able to get a list of?
No. There's, I have a list of more, but everybody else only participated in one. So these are the people who participated in two or more and who signed up. So I mean, if they didn't sign in, I can't know that they were there. So these are people who, all directions and signed in. They, they sort of actively participated. I have comments from these people. You know, they would tell me if they disagreed with something. They would tell me if they liked something, didn't like it. So they're giving me that and they are participating in more than one meeting. So.
So you said it needs to be pretty quick.
Yeah.
Our next meeting's Friday, but agenda's already been posted, but our meeting after that will be until July eleventh. Is that quick enough for us?
That'll push us off by a month, I think. I mean, y'all can decide to do whatever you want to do, you know? And I didn't know, I mean, in the current situation, I know this is an awkward situation because normally the city administrator would just be doing this and you would authorize that person and then they would go and do this. And so your decision tonight would be authorizing this to happen, but you don't have that person. And so you're, I know y'all are having to make decisions that normally you would defer to someone else to make. Delegate, there we go. You'd be delegating this normally. So, and I, you know, I know that you're not going to want to make this decision on the spot tonight. I just didn't know how you wanted to handle that decision-making process. And I know, Michael, you had done a lot of work on this a few months ago, so I don't know how this lines up. I just think it would be difficult to bring in people who have not participated at all. I worry because they haven't participated, you know? And then everyone up here has shown their interest because they participate multiple times, but also that they, like, we need people on there who can give you constructive criticism and constructive feedback. And so I think this would be good for that.
I just don't work to live.
Sir.
So on the eleventh, where y'all, you could do, we all have been at the, during committee picks or this is just a presentation for this day, obviously, it could be.
Obviously, yes, he's going to put it as well. Let's say you.
I mean, originally, we decided all these different areas, two people from two three TJ north, two three TJ south. Each council member picked one, six half picked one. There's two students on there, I guess I could, and they'll go. This school district have a representative. We invited the builders association from Johnson County. There's a couple, maybe both of them, twelve or thirteen. You said stepping behind the number.
My, my thought is just, because I'll have to do a ramp up. Like, if you did something like this, there would kind of not have to be a ramp up because all of these people have already done this for a month, for, you know, probably two weeks now. So that's the advantage to doing it this way, is you're just kind of appointing officially an unofficial group that's kind of already been helping to do this. But, or just add to it if you want more people there. And some of these people might not want to do this. I didn't ask them about this. They might not want to be involved. So it might be that, some of that too.
Maybe the same process where we choose all down and then give it our.
Yeah, to find out actually if these people are interested.
Yeah.
Somebody, there was a list we came up with. There are some of those made note of. Are they not included? Have they ever contacted? Do they not know what's going on? Do they just choose not to do it? Just, I don't, the eleven of them, both of them were the other guests, or both of these people, it's a group, period. I don't know what happened to the other people. They just didn't know what was going on?
Well, to me, I don't, and I, we didn't plan this, you know, because all of us thought we were going to have a group from the beginning, but it's interesting because I was thinking about it. I was like, in a way, this is a real soft audition of who, who's good at this, you know, because this is who steps up, volunteers, every week shows up, every week gives me their two cents, you know? So, so like I said, I didn't, nobody knew that I was going to say this. I didn't know I was going to do this either, but I, just the more I thought about it, it's just, it's kind of a challenge because you're almost at forty percent of a completed project. You can bring some people in from the outside, but I think if you brought a whole group of people in that haven't been doing this, I'm going to do an orientation either way. Like, the steering committee's going to get an orientation, but they won't have all those conversations and they won't have all of those comments that people gave, and they wouldn't have been involved in why things are the way they are in this district would. So I think it'd be fine to add some people other than that, but I definitely think getting at least a good chunk of that group from this list would be, would be really helpful. And I'll do a virtual, I had put together an orientation for them, for the steering committee originally, you know, back in the day. I don't remember where that was. So that's already ready and I can do that, I can do that tomorrow. We can do an orientation with them, get them plugged in quickly. So at this point, we're just kind of waiting to see what we want to do that way.
And this group is tasked with the task of building out the city for the decades and futures, I guess.
Now, I wouldn't say they have all that personal, that's all going to be their fault. Their, their job is to ensure that what the consultants do accurately reflects the input that has been given. And then if the community does have any concerns or if they really like or don't like something, those people bring that to us. And then they also help explain, because it's, sometimes the way I say things isn't the way people are going to hear it if you live here, you know? And so some, having local, and also in a lot of communities, this steering committee ends up being like a long-range advisory committee to counsel on implementing the plan. So they kind of ensure that this stuff gets carried forth. You need people who show up. You need people who are going to be interested, like I said, who are going to speak up and, and just provide a little bit of leadership in that way. And make sure that what gets developed accurately reflects the inputs they're giving.
So this is a kind of a fire worker between us and you.
They're like the people, kind of in a way. And they will help facilitate at the open house. They'll help at the different stations and stuff like that. So it's a, it's a real important role, but I, I don't think, I wouldn't say it felt like it's, they're the ones who are responsible, you know? So I'd say it's more of a communications role and a check role, like, if we're off track, they need to be able to tell us that. So. And they can report to y'all, so that y'all don't have to get consultancy here all the time, but it's nice to have a good steering committee because you can rely on them in a lot of.
Give me an example of how you would go off track.
Well, just like if I, like, if I just heard something, you know, like, let's say I heard something that the city wanted like all five acre lots on this side of town. Then they can say, oh, they got the wrong street name. That's not what they said over here for this area. Or if I say the name of, like, where I live, some people will say, like, the wrong streets in the meetings, and I'm always correcting them, like, it's not West Avenue, or it's not San Pedro, San Pedro. And so just stuff like that, you know? So there's a local aspect to every project, and so you need people who live there to make sure that those of us who don't live there are saying things the right way, that are understanding what, what everybody's concerns are. So.
So our original picks were, obviously, Ms. Cox. I got ahold of, tried to get ahold of Johnson County Builders Association. No one answered me back. Text up was Crawford. Godly ISB was Rich Gere. Nobody answered me from the chamber. Johnson County ESD was Tom Foster, who's the executive director. And JSED was Pete Camford, who's the general manager. E-City Council was allowed to pick. And those were Mark Bell, Clayton Smith, Carney Eldridge, Scott Dill, Theresa Carlson, and Chris Blackwell. All the Clayton Smith came back and said, yes. Our ETJ residents were for the south, Trin and Asengill, Ricky Roden, and Julie Eastman and Kayla Lee was the north. And there were students who were others.
And I'll tell you from, it's interesting because there's three, I believe there were three on that list from ETJ, and it's not from the same, because the one thing I checked, they're not from the same neighborhood, the three that ended up on there. So that is a nice, there's three county residents, but they're a little spread out, you know? But I do think, I, I like the idea of adding someone from, I think you had Jay, Fire, Fire and JSED. I think that's, it's just whether they're available. But anything related to public services and emergency services, it would be nice to, like, like, like adding a couple to my list is great. That'd be fun to round it out. But.
How many do you have in the starting list?
I wouldn't go more than nine. I mean, just filling seats is just hard. And then you get, it gets to be too big of a group, you know? I think mine's a good size. If you go a little more than nine, I mean, time, I think less, you know, you'd have attendance issues sometimes, you know? But I think that's a good size. And it would be monthly, monthly Zoom meeting commitments for them, and then we would do one in-person workshop. I'd need to get it scheduled. But it'd be like a couple, I think we have it set up towards like, like two nights, like Tuesday, Wednesday, one week, and then a Tuesday, Wednesday night the next week, I'm gonna deal with. So there's some evening commitments there too for some more in-person workshop, some stuff. But that's, and then, and you, like, go to the open house, you know, and stuff like that. So as far as the level of commitment, it'd be once a month Zoom meetings, and then for like a couple of weeks, some in-person work, drag and stuff, and then participation in the open house. And then participation in open meetings.
So how do y'all feel about each council member choosing somebody that'll aim forward? And we can choose somebody else that is to make a line now. And then, and I never, is that a new one?
Yeah, I'd say everybody. And I would say, so your conference plan is going to deal with prioritization of projects, which translates to things the city pays for. So you have to keep that in mind, that that's why your ratio of participation, you need to be real careful with that. So you want your biggest group to be people who live in the city. And it needs to be not just one part, it needs to be like a two-in-one ratio to any other group. And then you need business owners as well as residents, for sure, so.
You mean in city versus county?
Yeah. Like, that's why I say, one or two people in county is probably all you'll, all you'll need. Because you're going to end up with four or five residents, you'll have one with emergency service, with JSF or whatever. And then you're going to have probably a couple of business owners and then the school district, so.
So I would say that, no, someone from Tech Scott, Gaddy Crawford's been promoted to the local office. I can't remember the name of the county that her post, but whenever she was there, she said that either her, or not her, these years lived in all meetings. Obviously, school district plays a big role, we need that. Energy services plays a huge role. So I think Foster would be involved, JSF plays a huge role. That's where all the work outside of Crawford comes from. That's Ari, over.
Who, with some of them, they never answered you. So whoever were interested then, we'll try and, try again.
Ask her, the council?
Oh, just looking at the, Jay, the presidency district, who will answer to there, who will answer to a couple of them? Eve Elgo answer?
There's been turnover at JSF since then, I have contacts over.
Is this passing, is there anybody that's interested?
Do y'all still want to do council picks like that time?
Sure, that's fine.
Picks for the eight. And we choose one more.
Couple from the outside of the city? One or two, you can generate.
Yeah, you can go more than nine. I just, like I said, I would really caution against picking people, all these people we talked about that have not been involved so far because there are people who really give us a lot of feedback and there's been a lot of input given, a lot of conversations already had. And we're going to, we use that information, but that's a lot of people who are demonstrating a lot of commitment to this project where other people haven't. So I would recommend starting with this group and then maybe adding to it. But, I mean, y'all have decisions, but if I were to get that, that's what I would do.
So why do you have business owners on there? Why don't you have that a little bit?
Oh, yeah, well, you have to have that because one of the challenges we have is sales tax. And so you need good business, you need your chamber to grow, your chamber needs to be stronger. You need local businesses to grow and do well and be successful. And you don't want to drive them out by regional and national businesses coming in, things like that. And so you want your chamber represented always, always, always. And there's some conversations we're going to have to have about whether the city wants to create an ABC or not. So people who kind of know about that kind of thinking, business owners, you need that perspective because you're talking about a sales tax that's currently dedicated to economic development. So you need business owners representing, and they're property owners too, so.
So you're talking about a type A, not a type B?
Either.
We already have type E.
Y'all, is it just Godley or is it Godley Johnson County?
Godley.
It's just the new Godley. And do you already have the sales tax, so it's an industrial then?
Yes, we use that as a component through the different classes.
Well, we'll have a talk about that then, that's good to know. But people who know about, who can talk about that, need to be on this steering committee. So, because it's not, it's not just about residential uses. This is about industrial uses, it's about commercial uses, it's about how, what's going to happen with downtown, what's going to happen with different development on 171. So a lot of the planning deals with things other than residential. And so you don't want all residents, you need people who are on these businesses that are also going to be affected.
So y'all have someone in mind?
I might see Trin up there, if he has to be. He's a business owner and a developer, residential.
There's a couple also, just to let you know, there were a couple of developers that participated and I believe it was the first call and gave me their contact information, but they're not local Godley people. They're just paid to all up here, so. But if there's, in my opinion, you want people who are vested here to be making decisions there. So I can have that, that list on my reference list, you know, in case I need to call with questions. But I think that it'd be more appropriate to get, like the gentleman you mentioned would probably be a better fit.
I don't know if he'll do it because he's, you know, he's so busy, I guess I can see.
Never asked him last time, he said he could. He lives in ETJ South.
Yes, he does. I think he'd be a good addition.
So do we want to just go, since he is a developer and builder, do we want to go with him? Last time we really talked about going with the Builders Association, just so.
They didn't get back to you, did they? Ah, that's cool, it's funny, he lives here, works here, builds here, something out there.
So are y'all okay with me getting ahold of Tech Scott, school district?
Yep.
ESB, J. South.
You're gonna help them, you know, all up there.
Yeah, sure.
And well?
You can do all of them.
Should, and just for clarification, okay, so I would be able to do an orientation with the who? So I can understand, who's my point of contact now? Is it you or is it Kathleen or who? Who am I? How, do I have, Michael?
Right now, only AC and I are designated contacts, otherwise it'd be me until...
So who exec, yeah, so do you write checks now, basically, is the question? Because that answers that question real fast.
She drives them, I guess I sign them.
You sign them, okay. So whoever signs the checks is reporting contact, okay? And then, so just so I understand, so we're saying we're still moving forward with the steering committee, but we need a little bit more time to figure out who that is? Is that the correct, is that where we're at?
Roger, you want it till the 11th, right?
Yeah, definitely, we'll go on that.
Okay, and then?
That'll give us a chance to get this team.
Sure, no, okay. And I didn't expect it tonight, like, at all, you guys need to think about it. But I just wanted to show my two cents and then figure out. So if you guys, will you, because here's where it is, are you going to, is it, are they official that night? Or are you putting the names out there that night? Because if you're just putting the names out there that night, then it's another month before you, they, you know? That's the side of it. So, like, are you saying on the 11th, this is our steering committee?
Yes, y'all will come back with picks, those will be your picks.
Have they already been confirmed?
We'll confirm them at that night, but they will be confirmed that night. You'll have a city, it'll be a steering committee that night.
If something happens that can't happen, we'll have a special meeting to make sure it happens exactly.
And then, I guess, so I just asked you for that then, Michael, after leaving, like, on the 12th?
I'll send it.
Okay, okay. I always have to remember these, those, those questions, okay? So you're the lucky guy, Michael's the lucky guy now, okay? I think that's all, I have, y'all have the other questions, but, and I'm hoping, I think we can... My thing is, I don't, I don't want, I don't think it's right for consultants to be developing plans for, I mean, this is about the community doing this. And so I don't, I don't feel comfortable getting too much further down the road without that committee in place. So we will probably, like, we can do, most of our summaries of what's already been done, you know? So most of that report we can get done, but when it comes to final draft of like vision statement and goals and stuff like that, we'll need that group to list that and ratify it and map it out.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, guys.
So what we want to do, table this till the 11th? Five, two, three, four, five, yes. Make motion, table, decide until July.
I haven't listened to that, send it through. Yes.
All right.
Uh, I'm, we have that, maybe it's like a little. I don't think discussion and possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer responses to legal RFP. We had any responses to RFP, Quincy, right side?
No, sir, we have no.
I received no responses from TML posting. Making motion, take no action, that's all. Clear. Motion second.
Free.
Aye.
Uh, aye. Very unanimously. I don't think discussion and possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer, city attorney, possibly hiring slash accepting a contract for an interview attorney. At this time, nineteen twenty-five, one nine two five, we're closed over meeting. Go to the executive session utilizing section five five one dash zero seven four. Discussion on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, interview for the municipal attorney position. Section five five one, authorized, five five one dash zero seven four, authorizing a public officer to learn from you under consideration for request of public hearing. Would you like to discuss this in public meeting or with executive be fine? That's your desk, your evening.
That's you guys.
Which one?
Are you DA or SC?
Toast?
That's me, I'm D.
Oh, D?
Yeah. I wasn't sure if you were asking for your existing city attorney. Okay. You want us?
Tell you, what is that, a decision?
I haven't, I haven't made a decision, unless y'all want it.
I think I do.
Just for a clear decision, we know our chemistry.
Okay, if you want it, then I'm asking for it.
You've got to say it's your, or I'm going to.
It's going to be minutes.
All are covered in.
I want to get the names.
What did you say?
What?
Oh, game's over. Can you repeat what you said?
I said the meeting's over. Word adjourned.
We are not reading the meeting from executive session, meeting is over.
So y'all, what happened? Y'all started, you know?
People look different up there. You've got a haircut or shaved.
Okay, that is.
Keep up with you.
About to super bowl, very competitive. Right on your side, it's like, now.
I have everything, you're going to be seven million residents.